I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city council meeting. First item on the agenda is that we have all members of the city council present with the exception of councilman Fairbanks, Cook, and Catlin. There's a copy of the Opens Meeting Act on the west wall and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Next item is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item under the consent agenda, item A, approve agenda as submitted, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on May 4th, 2015, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of the treasurer's report of claims. E1, approval of the street department claims in the amount of $26,853.43 as recommended by the board of public works. Item E2, approval of the balance of the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $491,842.25. Item F, approval of Boswa report of claims in the amount of $9,885.84. Item G, resolution number 5771, appointing Michael Fakler, Jack Corey, Blake Meitz, Troy Cook, and Kevin Reitzman to the board of appeals. Item H, resolution number 5772, authorizing vendors approved by Community Possibilities, permission to sell goods on city properties for the third Thursday events. And item I, approval of change order number one for an increase in the amount of $11,285.34 for the armor coat paving project, number 15-001 with top coat ink for the addition of Hannibal Park. Are there any items that a city councilman would like removed from the agenda, from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Partey?
Make a motion, items listed under consent agenda be approved except for ratified as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Partey, seconded by Billsbach, that those items under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive the semi-annual report of the Citizens' Advisory Review Committee as provided by the local option Municipal Economic Development Act. And Grant Jones is with us. Grant, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Don't have a lot to report from our last scheduled meeting as we haven't had many applications for new businesses since that time. We have about, a little over $776,000 in the CAR or LB840 funds and $40,270 in CDVG money. I understand we have some applications that are at the city administration level yet, but our group was not able to meet yet. I believe we have a meeting next week to go over that.
How much was in the LB840?
LB840, $776,352. Yeah, 352.20. Our current loans that are out there, for the most part, are pretty well up to date. Dog's Hut, which goes by LMMR, Dog's Hut, they've been making their payments. Canned Hams is catching up. Home Steady Glass is doing a good job and they've been consistent the whole time. Dempsters has nothing due yet. And Rare Earth, we just, Project Jobs is the only one we have open since the other one or two phases were stopped.
When is Dempsters due?
Couple months yet, I think, there's on that one.
Is it July?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Dempsters, I think, is August.
I want to say August as well.
All right. Questions?
Let's hope you're busier.
Waiting for the applications.
Questions, anybody? Anyone from the audience? Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Recommend that we close the public hearing?
Make a motion, public hearing be closed at 7:05 PM. Second.
It's been moved by Partey, seconded by Rich. That the public hearing be closed at 7, what did you say, 7:05?
Yes.
7:05 PM? Your vote, please. And that is approved, 5-0. Next is a public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant.
May I take this one?
Go for it.
All right. As you may remember, in 2010, the city of Beatrice applied for downtown revitalization CDVG grant. We were ultimately successful in that initial grant, which was a phase one grant in the amount of $30,000 approximately of CDVG funds with a city match of approximately $7,500. The purpose of those funds was to undertake a study to look at downtown revitalization projects, meet with the public, put together a downtown revitalization plan, which was ultimately adopted by this body and created in 2012. Once that project was completed and the plan was developed and adopted, then you're able to apply for a phase two downtown revitalization CDVG grant, and that's when you actually would perform a physical project in conjunction with your plan. The city did undertake that project, and it was the Fifth Street project. We have completed the Fifth Street project and expended all the funds pursuant to the grant, and so now we are complete. From my understanding, talking with city administrator Templemeier, there's a limited number of communities based on population and other criteria which qualify for those federal grant dollars through the state DED. As all the other communities now pass through, that DED is opening back up, everybody's eligible to come back in and request funding again. And so, part of what we're doing here now is looking, you still have to complete another phase one. To ever get to phase two where we get money to implement projects, you have to do a phase one again. And so, it's kind of a twofold thing we're asking here tonight. One is to get us to a phase two to continue our downtown development, but also, in light of the most recent discussions we've had about moving Highway 136, which was a predominant piece of the plan in the original downtown revitalization plan that was developed, was to move Highway 136 or realign that highway. And we had significant discussions about that. We actually conducted a study to look at different prospects and brought forth, based on the study that was completed, a proposition for that to look at. And as it's been deemed, there was no efforts to go forward with that further. Based on the way that the original 2010 developed plan worked, if you didn't realign the highway, we were not able to perform almost any of the other functions that are outlined in the plan because they require the removal of the right-of-way that's dictated and owned by the state off of Court Street onto another street, most likely Market as the plan detailed. And that would allow us to do new streetscapes, mid-block crossings, planters, all the kind of fancy elements that were continued within the plan for downtown redevelopment along that corridor and the Fifth Street corridor. Noting that, noting that that was such a big part of the plan and the fact that now we've essentially stalled on moving that or have no more movement on that portion of the project, we are also recommending this reapplication for phase one to take a look at that with the recommendation of not moving the highway and seeing what plan can be developed and preparing us to move to another phase two project. And so, that's the approach we're looking at here, that's what the application will detail. It's the history of what we've done so far, and then if we decide to move forward, potentially looking at moving forward without realignment of 136. And so, that's, that's what we're putting together.
Rich?
So, we don't have to pay the money back that we had in the first grant because we didn't complete with the...
No, 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 yeah. The first grant was to just develop the plan, that was the $30,000. And then the next portion was the Fifth Street project. We completed Fifth Street, so we completed everything required of the original grant phases.
Now, this grant you wanted to get, what are we intending to do with it? What do you...
We will develop a new downtown revitalization plan.
Without the, without the roundabouts and the...
That, as I've developed and written, that it is noted in there, and so, I'm assuming that as we go forward and we do the public process that's involved in the study and meet with both officials from the city, members of the public, members of groups like Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, and others, that that most likely should come forth. Other, I mean, if we're not moving, realigning the highway, we should just go back and use our old plan and keep moving forward with it. But again, I also will stress, without doing a phase one, we can never get to another phase two. So, we do have to go back and do a phase one. Maybe the outpouring will be decided and there'll be a huge community uproar that really does want to move the highway, and that will be included again in it. But, the way I'm developing and writing it is noting to them that, you know, where we are in the process and what we've tried to do and that we've completed the study, and we have, it doesn't look to me anything moving forward on that, and so we need to go back and reevaluate.
The second phase is where we figure out what we want to do with the money.
The second phase is where we identify a project within the plan.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, last, the one in 2010, 2012, or whatever, didn't DED come down and we had to kind of woo them a little bit that we were interested in this, that public had, we had some meetings, we had meetings with, I remember at the Kensington, we had several things and that we'd gone over and showed our support of a project like this in order for us to even be considered, you know, for the grant. Was, am I wrong on that? Was that...
No, you're correct.
It's been a while ago that we did that.
During the first grant application, DED last time came down, had an onsite visit. We met them originally in the city auditorium, then we walked them down through the downtown, met with some different business owners, stopped and showed them what we were seeing as far as the downtown revitalization, and ultimately ended up, I think, might have been back at the Carnegie building at the time to kind of wrap everything up as part of their visit. But they were onsite for probably a couple of hours. Between, you know, between the time that we will turn in the grant application and the ultimate award of those grant applications, I believe we'll have, if we're even deemed eligible, they'll come down and do a site visit again, they'll meet with us, and that's, then we'll continue to have a discussion with them and explain, here's what's going on in downtown. I think what will speak highly to us is, we were very successful with what we did identify. It's just that, that one specific portion of their plan, which almost the entire plan hinges on as you read through it, it's one of the first identified things that we were supposed to complete. We made all efforts to do that, we did the study specific to realigning of the highway. If we're not going to move forward with that, the rest of the plan just is, should be left on a bookshelf. And so, this is to either shore up the fact that we're not ever going to, in the near future, realign the highway or move forward. And again, we still have to do it because we'll get no phase two dollars without doing it, so.
Well, they, I would think that they'd be fairly impressed with the Fifth Street and the Carnegie building and all that other stuff we revamped down there.
I would think so.
You know, it's a star that we've got right now.
Certainly would be highlights on the tour.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Don't take them to 407, okay?
And as we'll note, we'll, the applications are very similar. The last one did focus more predominantly on the issues with the intersecting of Highway 136 and 77, the issues we have with vehicle traffic there. We'll still discuss those, but we're also going to discuss all the successes we've had since we've implemented. And we have people here tonight, Community Possibilities, and the third Thursday projects that they're putting on, the popcorn stand.
Hot dogs.
The hot dog stand that is regularly on the Fifth Street. I mean, you go over on Fifth Street in the afternoons and lunchtime, and there's people sitting on the planters and sitting in some of the outdoor seating that's available. I think we have a lot of success to show and talk about in our application, which I think will, will lead to, you know, give me a good expression, that we're open for business and want to complete another one of these projects for them, but at the same time, give this community some options in regards to, what can we do if we don't realign 136?
I'm very excited about the possibilities.
Any other comments? Anyone from the audience? Okay, Mr. Partey?
Make a motion, public hearing be closed at 7:14. Second.
Been moved by Partey, seconded by Morgan. That the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, 5-0. Next, I'll introduce resolution number 5773, authorizing the application in the amount of $30,000 for the pre-development study for the revitalization and redevelopment of the downtown business district.
Make a motion, resolution number 5773 be passed and adopted. Second.
Been moved by Partey, seconded by Claybaugh. That the resolution number 5773 be passed and adopted. Discussion, please.
As you'll note, this is just the formal application. This has given us the authorization to actually formally submit the application. It's our commitment that we will expend, as the match is noted, it's going to be $7,500, exactly what it was last time when we did it five years ago. And that's required as a 25% match within the grant.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, 5-0. Next is a resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska to reimburse itself for expenditures made in connection with the acquisition of certain public safety equipment for the city.
Make a motion, resolution number 5774 be passed and adopted. Second.
Moved by Partey and actually seconded by Morgan, that resolution number 5774 be passed and adopted. Discussion, Mr. Templemeier?
About every three or four years, the city issues public safety debt to help us fund certain public safety equipment that's out there. Last public safety debt was issued about three years ago. It is set to expire, I believe, next June is the last payment. One of the things that we can do is we can pass this resolution before you tonight and allows the city to reimburse itself with the proceeds from the public safety debt that's issued in the future. Obviously, with the lightning strike, Chief Lang has been spending some money in the police department purchasing new equipment. We're paying for those currently out of cash reserves. We do have insurance, and we did meet with the adjuster today, and there will be insurance proceeds. However, as, as insurance, there is obviously some things that either aren't covered or are part of your deductible. And so, what we're asking you to do is pass this resolution, authorizing the city to have the ability to reimburse itself with public safety debt proceeds in the future. It does not obligate you to do that in the future, it does not obligate you to issue public safety debt in the future. It simply provides you the option to reimburse yourself if that's the avenue you choose to pursue in the future.
Was there a limit on this?
There is a limit on the, on the amount of public safety debt we can issue. I believe we have to keep it under five cents, and so, you do the calculation, there's a limit there. This number we put in this resolution was an estimate on kind of what we thought maybe the first round of bills would be for the communication equipment.
And does everybody know what that estimate is?
I actually have it. I think it's in the resolution here.
Questions from the audience? Seeing none, your vote, please. That is approved, 5-0. Resolution number 5774 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is a resolution entering into a inter-local cooperation agreement with the city of Crete, Nebraska, to operate the southeast Nebraska 911 center and radio dispatch system for a term of two years. And Chief Lang has been working on this diligently for a long time, and if you want to make a presentation, Chief, that'd be great.
Great. Well, I am pleased to announce to you, we're bringing forth an agreement tonight that if approved tonight and with the city of Crete, that will establish the 911, I'm sorry, Nebraska Southeast Region 911 Center. What that does is, that's the first step in regionalizing. What we have learned this last two weeks could be a very expensive endeavor, and that is 911, the delivery of 911 communication services. These parts that are lightning struck and destroyed can serve us larger areas than just us. And so, by doing this, this helps us to share those costs among other communities. This will add to us the city of Crete and the police department and the city of Crete's fire and rescue departments. That will mean that the dispatch center will then be dispatching for five different law enforcement agencies and about 18 fire and rescue departments. In doing so, we do that on a contract basis. Everyone pays a fee, and as you see in this contract, the fees are substantial because the cost to run a center is substantial. And the city of Crete was faced with buying a lot of the things that we're replacing with insurance funds, they were replacing because they were old and dying. And so, they were looking at options, and at this time was a perfect storm, so to speak, because we had some other things in the hopper. One of the other things that will be coming forward in the weeks to come, you'll be hearing about a shared 911 system. There was a committee we put together of southeast Nebraska PSAPs, and that's what you call a dispatch center, is a PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point. We put these together for southeast Nebraska because we had a problem inherent with all the 911 phones systems in Nebraska. The result of that is we awarded contracts to Windstream slash Airbus, the same company that makes the airplanes, and they are providing what's called a shared system, and which means that in, there'll be a box in Lincoln that all phone, 911 phone calls in southeast Nebraska will go to, and then they'll be routed back out to their appropriate PSAP. Every PSAP that then has what they call backroom equipment, amounts to about $100,000 worth of stuff. Again, the city of Crete was faced with having to purchase that in addition to a console and lots of other things that they didn't have. We will be able to have one system and be able to share that with, with everybody involved. It's a, it's a really good, good thing for all of us. It'll make the system much more reliable and much, much better as far as in the event of an emergency, if you have to go to a backup center like we are currently in and will be for another couple of weeks. So, having said that, we went through a lot of negotiations with the city of Crete. The concept was pretty straightforward, the cost figures were really pretty straightforward as far as this is what we would have to do to make it worth our while to do this. We will add staff, we'll be hiring two dispatchers and a regional, or a director. We've long needed a director. Actually, there's this thing, communications and technology has got so complicated, we've needed a director. The county is also in bad need of a radio guru, and this person, the director's salary, 25% of that, the county has agreed to pay for that in exchange for them, for that person helping them with their towers and repeaters and voting stations and statewide radio towers and all those things that take up county commissioners' times. So, we think that it's a positive. We think that it's the first step in regionalization of southeast Nebraska. As I told all of you, if you remember back at the work session, our vision is that at some point that this would be a group that would be a voting group, that be much like a drug task force. A city would still remain as a fiscal agent, but the users would actually, through the director, manage the system and decide how it was going to operate as the thing grows in time, you know, as time goes on, as we develop a cost model that different counties they start looking at, and cities start looking at what it costs to do this, and you find that, we know, for example, there's counties around us that in five years, with the current cost model we have, we'd save them a million dollars. Well, that's a lot of money in, in most places, especially in southeast Nebraska. We, we tend to forget, really, population-wise, that we're pretty sparsely populated. We're talking pretty small numbers, and it doesn't make any sense to have one dispatcher sitting over here and this dispatcher, and 20 miles away, there's another one sitting here, and 20 miles away, there's another one. We have five within 30 miles of Beatrice, and none of them can help each other. That just doesn't make any real sense. So, we think this is the path that the future holds, and we're beyond excited about it, a little nervous. You know, there's a lot of balls in the air here and a lot of people to keep happy, but we're looking forward to it, and at that point, I'll certainly answer questions that you might have.
Questions? Partey?
Sounds like you're pretty proud of our current location, but what about the county? Are there some point we're going to have to upgrade areas down there if we start getting in more business or not?
Like, you mean...
Or secondary operation?
Yeah, actually, what we're probably looking at is completely changing the way we do backup. That's one of the beauties of this new technology. For example, the console, which is one of the big-ticket items we just bought, and it's no secret, it was $329,000 for this piece of equipment. What it, one of the things that it does is it has a component in it that allows you to take a laptop and you can go to an off-site location that has internet, and you can log in, and you can dispatch from that off-site, wherever it's at. Same thing with the 911 phones that are going to be coming in, you'd be able to do that. What that means is we could pick another dispatch center that's in place in Lincoln or Fairbury or anyplace and develop that as a backup center, which would be much, much more conducive to operations than what we're doing right now. So, yeah, that's all part of what we're thinking about as we go forward.
But if that's burnt with lightning like we've got now, we wouldn't, we wouldn't use the courthouse backup system, we'd go to Lincoln?
No, we would go, we could go wherever we had set up. The reason we go to the courthouse now is because that's where we've established it. We would, we would, what I'm saying is going forward, where we're at's very small and not very good. I think everyone agrees with that. It's, it's a good stopgap, but it's, well, as we find, you know, if you're there for very long, it's pretty claustrophobic. What we would look at is, is technology lets us do things quicker, meaning that we don't have, right now, we had to have this all preset up. I don't know if you remember this, but back when we had the renovation, we did a test, it went badly, and we fixed all those things that weren't working, so when this lightning strike hit, we were kind of up and running. But we would be able to do that much simpler and in a better location. I'm not saying it would be Lincoln, it could be any, could be anywhere, anyplace that we chose, that we thought would work.
So, if our software got hit, we would have software in place somewhere else, be wherever it is, that we could just pick up just like that and go?
That's correct.
Good.
That's correct.
Seems to me you wouldn't want to have your backup within four or six blocks of your... It doesn't, I talked about the long time ago, I think, but...
There's, yes, there's, there's two schools of thought. One is, boy, that's nice because they're close, and they're in town. The bad school thought is, yes, if a natural disaster hits us, it's more likely going to hit the courthouse too. So, those, those certain things are all part of planning. Not to get off subject a little bit, but you know, we, this whole emergency planning is something Mayor visited with us about today, and we're, you know, we're working to make sure our plans are current and up to date, and all of you that are new to the game, that we get you up to speed as well, and so, that's all, that's all part of the emergency operations plans.
Was there, was there talk of any longer than a two-year contract?
Well, what, what happens with these things, Rick, is everybody's a little nervous going in because it's new, so they want to have an exit clause that gives them the ability to get out within a reasonable amount of time if it's a disaster. It just doesn't work for them or us or whatever. So, that's pretty normal in the beginning. A lot of times it's only, people want to go a year. I can tell you, the reality, and as Steve Hensel, the chief in Crete, said, the reality is, going back would be incredibly difficult. So, we're not concerned at all about the two-year part. We think that that's, that gives everybody a reasonable comfort level of, see, before we marry each other, that we get along good.
And you'll be hiring your director from outside?
Yes, unfortunately. The criteria for the director is, we're hoping to attract, we're, we're offering a reasonably good, what we think's a good salary and with benefits and everything, but what we're asking of this person's pretty, pretty significant.
Any other questions of the chief?
Is it, is the system that you're putting in now, can you add more to it if you wanted to down the road? I mean, could you actually add another town part of the dispatch if you wanted to?
We, we think the infrastructure would be in place that we could add almost all of southeast Nebraska. Yeah. With, with probably adding one more station and a few more people, but within the, the infrastructure we have, let me give you just a quick example, I won't take all your time, but our software, for example, is used in cities that run 100 cars per shift. You know, big cities, you know, that's just what's a normal big city would put out. The software does that without any problems. The statewide radio system that's now in this new console is built into it as a part of it. You know, that has huge expandabilities to the whole state. So, yes, we think the expandability's there, that's one... That's one of the, we think's a selling point to the whole project.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you very much for your due diligence on all of this and appreciate your sticking to it.
That's right.
Chief, and this is all over with, and they're back to the main area. Will you buy them all lunch or supper?
What was the first part?
You buy all your staff there? They're cramped in the corners running out, supper or lunch?
You know, and Dwight, thanks for bringing that up. I mean, you know, what they went through to relocate and then with the flood, after that, those dispatchers, every single one of them deserve all of our praise because literally as fast as they could pick up the phone, as soon as they hung it up, and it rang constantly for three days. And the lines were jammed completely. So, you know, I'm sure they were, phones ringing in their sleep. So yes, we've noted their efforts. Thanks for bringing that up.
If all, if we're complete on the comments and discussion, I would note, just for clerical purposes, the copy that you have in your packet here, we just request an amendment in paragraph four, when it talks about fees, as you'll note, the contract is set to begin on or about July 1st. The first payment is noted at July 1st. Initially, we had discussed June 1st, but after a meeting between myself, Chief Lang, and then we went up and met with administration from Crete, those two references to June 1st in section four, C and D, we'd request that those be moved to July 1st, so everything lines up together. And so I have something written here. You're okay, Joe? I'll let you do it. Just ask for an amendment on that.
I'd like to.
We haven't made a motion yet.
Yep.
I'd like to move to strike the word June from section four, C, and four, D, and insert the word July.
We have not made a motion on that yet, though.
We haven't made a motion yet.
Yeah, we haven't made a motion to pass it. We just, all this is, this is just a resolution we heard from Chief Lang. I need to, no, we have not. So let me do that next, okay? So with that said, I'll introduce Resolution Number 5775, entering into a new inter-local cooperation act agreement with the City of Crete, Nebraska to operate the Southeast Nebraska 911 Center and Radio Dispatch System for a term of two years.
Would they change your date?
That's all I need to say, is a change of June to July date on the motion?
Sure.
Yep.
Make a motion to Resolution Number 75, 5775, with the change of June 1st to July 1st in both areas of section four, C and D, be passed and adopted?
Second, Kirk.
Been moved by party, seconded by Kirk, that Resolution Number 5775 be passed and adopted. Now discussion.
That covers it without an amendment, doesn't it?
That should be fine.
Yeah, it's good.
The intent is there.
Okay. Any discussion from the audience? Okay. Seeing none, your vote please. And that is approved 5-0. Resolution Number 5775 has been passed and adopted.
I'm going to get a yes or no. I'm going to get a yes or no. I'm going to have questions tomorrow about that.
There is no ordinances tonight. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item on the, for an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Rich?
I don't know if this is where I should do this or not, but I just, I want to, you know, mine and Dwight's ward was pretty cut off there during that flood. And I just want to thank the city for getting the fire department, the police department, the ambulants over there to take care of our problems. That was outstanding work by all of our folks. And some of the businesses over there were just outstanding with the help and the support that they gave the community over there, and I'd like to thank them for that, too. It's, when a small community like this comes together, it's amazing what they can accomplish.
Very good.
Thanks a lot, Chief, Chief, and the other Chief that's not here.
Thanks, Rich. Well said. And Michael Southen?
The reason why I was coming up here is, along a similar note, yeah, I got cut off too, but in its own way. As you guys know, the last time we were here at the city council meeting, you guys proclaimed May is National Preservation Month. And one of the activities that we do is ask the school kids here in this town to, to kind of participate in National Preservation Month with us. And this year's theme was a building I'm glad we have in Beatrice. And generally, we don't get a whole lot for public buildings that are a part of these. Now, the theme always changes, but this year was very much a different story. And we've already gotten back hundreds, about over 100 of these, and we're, we've had a large number that are also here from the different departments within the city. So I just wanted to share those with you, just since we got a bunch of these back here today. We had several that were the Carnegie Building. You guys just mentioned the Carnegie Building. We had a very large number that were the library, numbers and numbers of those, Chautauqua Park, the tabernacle, the swimming pool. We had the fire department, the Humane Society, the Beatrice Police Department, several of those. And so, yes, you know, definitely, people are recognizing our fire department, our police department, and every, all the different public services that you guys help provide here to this community and the city staff does. So we just wanted to kind of present and show some of these here to you guys and just say, you know, thank you for all of that. These will, hopefully, if you guys are okay with it, I'll probably get them to you to buy us and see if we can't get them out to some of the different departments and if they want to hang them up somewhere, whether that be at the office downtown or wherever their departments are, just kind of a neat thing, just to see, and if you guys have any interest in seeing them. There's everything from the absolute most wonderful to some of the most, most interesting renditions of what you find. And so there's a little bit of that. And then kind of on the heels of all of our Preservation Month stuff, a little workshop that I gave you guys some information on, I do hope you guys can join us on June 3rd for that workshop. We had something similar back in 2013 that was very well received and got a lot of discussion going, and I hope you can join us for that. And I'm talking about reinvesting into this community. So thank you very much, gentlemen, and have a great day.
Thank you, Michael. Next item on the agenda is the city administrator's monthly report. Tobias?
Outside of natural disasters, we do have business going on as usual around here, so sometimes it's hard to believe. But first thing I would just note, in the building inspection department, Rob Marrow has passed five of his certification tests. And so those five tests, when we initially hired him, we stated that would come with a promotion to being a building inspector. And so we have made that change internally. He's still doing the same job, nothing changes there. He said a lot, I think, today, looked at a number of weed complaints, and he was very helpful during the flood. He went and inspected the trail for us that runs out of town to make sure that thing was going to be safe and what areas we need to address. But he has made, passed those certifications and is on his way. Police department, we met with the insurance adjuster today. I will tell you, the travels insurance has done a great job helping us with this claim and been on, right on the ball. So we are working through that, and Chief Lang has put together some information that they requested, just some quotes and then some cost figures, and we'll work through that claim. Public properties, right now, they are busy cleaning up a number of things, but if you notice in there, there'll be some improvements out at Hannibal Park, some scoreboards and some batting cages. Those things were all paid for by their own funds or funds that they've been able to raise. So when you see those improvements coming in out there. The electric department, if you look through the claims, one of the large expenses you saw in there was for a new transformer that went out at Substation 9, which is the industrial park. We put the new transformer in to help upgrade the facilities out in that area to handle the loads that are there. The transformer we took out, we'll do some work on it. We're going to put it in and out of BSTC as part of our ongoing upgrading of the voltage conversion program. And so that's, we'll move out there. But, so if you saw that one. The water department, the water main project for Boring the River came in well under budget. And so Steve Kelly has added another water main project for this year. They've got a water main that they're going to be adding in on Seventh Street in addition to what they already had previously budgeted. I think that number's estimated about $32,000. So even with the additional water main project, they still should remain under their capital project or the capital budget. So other than that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did you get those four structures, the state skateboard park, to Mr. Jones? I want my money.
Yes, we have, and we are working through that claim as well. It's a separate claim from the lightning strike claim. And so right now, to be honest, the lightning strike claim came in first and has a little bit higher priority, at least on city office, so we're working on that one first.
Beg your pardon, what was your question?
During the flood, our skateboard park, we have four wooden structures left down there.
Right.
They pretty much got underwater. They are plywood, laminated plywood. Went down there shortly afterwards. Mark and I both looked at them, and they're starting to gap. And we're going to have to take them out. They're just not safe. And by the time they dry out and they get the gapping, so we're hoping that either FEMA or Mr. Jones there will take care of them and at least get us some kind of cost. And we would like to replace them back with the metal ones that we've been replacing with. And to be quite honest with you, that thing gets used year-round. That's one of the best, best money we ever spent for those kids.
I actually received an email today off the website from one of the kids asking when some things will be done out there. So we are working on it.
Honest to God, Dwight and I, to be honest with you, after that thing was put in, Dwight and I drove by, was that on a, right after Christmas, wasn't it? Those kids were out there with brooms, sweeping off the snow so they could use their new skateboards they got for Christmas. We were just in awe of the way that that thing.
They were after cleaning off the mud off of them.
Yeah. I think Pete Thaw's done a pretty good job is on that right now.
I just know we're lucky to have one of them, even though it's one of the wood structures. I went down there with Mark shortly after the flood when we were doing assessments, and the largest wood structure down there, the quarter pipe or portion of the half pipe, dislodged itself completely from its brackets and picked itself up and ran into the Jersey barriers. And that was the only thing that stopped it from ending up down in Holmesville. So, I mean, it was, it moved significantly. I mean, 20, 30, 40.
Yeah, we went down and looked at it, too. It's a mess. And that is, that is a, like I said, that is something that our kids use quite a bit.
Okay. Any other questions of Tobias? Moving on to the legislative update, Tobias?
Last time we talked about LB 610, and this is the one that increased the gas tax. It passed over the governor's veto last week, I think last Thursday when it was voted on. And so INDOR has come out with some numbers, and mine were pretty close, I'll have to say. But INDOR came out with some numbers as to what this means. And in the first fiscal year, which is next fiscal year, INDOR will get additional $2.1 million. The cities and the counties will split $4.2 million equally. So we'll get 2.1. No, the counties get 2.1, the cities get 2.1. And then the city gets theirs, it's based upon lane miles, and there's a number of calculations that go into how much we get. In next fiscal year, that means the city will get an additional, according to the INDOR website, $19,464 is what we'll get the first year. By fiscal year 2020, when this thing is supposed to be fully implemented, the city is supposed to receive an additional $237,025. Now, that essentially equates out to the repaving of one city block. That's what that would cover.
In today's dollars.
In today's dollars. Yes. So it is helpful. I mean, if you look, we haven't had a repave project on the books for the last couple of years due to lack of finances. This certainly does help put one of those projects back into the budget. Yes.
You're talking about the repaving project. Maybe this isn't the time to bring it up, maybe it is. Are we thinking about, I have some city sales tax again on the next ballot?
You're correct. That's not the appropriate time to talk about it.
Strike that, guys, would you? Oh, quit laughing at me, Kennedy.
Other than that.
Thanks for bringing it up.
I will come down Friday and talk to you.
That'd be great. So that's been the biggest thing on the legislative change.
Any questions of Tobias? All right. Our next regular city council meeting will be on June 1st at 7:00. And our work session, and please take note, will be on Tuesday and not Monday. It will be Tuesday, May 26th at 7:00 in this building. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion the meeting be adjourned at 7:45 PM?
Second. Clayball.
Moved by party, seconded by Billsbach, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:45 PM. Your vote please. And that's approved 5-0. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.